Good afternoon. I'd like to call this public meeting to order. At the conclusion of our first public session, the Board will go into executive session to discuss several personnel matters. We expect then to reconvene for a second brief public session following the executive session. I would like to read the following notice. The meetings of the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York are open to the public, and the Board welcomes the interest of those who attend. The public has ample opportunity to communicate with the Board. Public hearings on the Board's policy calendar are scheduled one week prior to the Board's regular meetings, and members of the public who wish to communicate with the Board are invited to express their views at such public hearings. Furthermore, the Board holds additional public hearings each year in all of the five boroughs, in which members of the public may also speak. In addition, any written communications to the Board are routinely distributed to all trustees. The Board must carry out the functions assigned to it by law, and therefore cannot tolerate conduct by members of the public that disrupts its meetings. In the event of disruptions, including noise, which interferes with Board discussion, after appropriate warning, I will ask the security staff to remove any persons engaging in disruptive conduct. The university may seek disciplinary and/or criminal sanctions against persons who engage in conduct that violates the university's rules or state laws, which prohibit interference with the work of public bodies. May I now request that everyone take a moment to mute your cellphone or BlackBerry? As usual, CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this afternoon's meeting of the Board of Trustees live on cable channel 75. The meeting is also being webcast live and can be accessed at www.cuny.edu. The public session of this Board meeting will be available as a podcast within 24 hours and can also be accessed via the CUNY website. I would like to report that the Board held its Queensborough hearing at Queensborough Hall on Monday, April 19, 2010. Vice Chair Philip Berry chaired the hearing that was also attended by Trustees Wellington Chen and Corey Provost. Members of the Chancellery and Queens College Presidents or their representatives also attended. The Board held its Bronxborough hearing at Ostos Community College on June 21, 2010. Trustee Hugo Morales chaired this hearing, which was also attended by Trustees Rita DiMartino, Carol Robles-Romond, Corey Provost, and Manfred Philip, along with members of the Chancellery and the Bronx College Presidents or their representatives. Summaries of the proceedings of both hearings have been circulated to all trustees, and to the Chancellor's Cabinet, and transcripts are available in the office of the Secretary. Congratulations to trustee Jeffrey Wiesenfeld for being honored as Father of the Year on September, June 19, by the Hampton Synagogue in West Hampton, New York. I would also like to congratulate Professor Sandy E. Cooper, who was elected as Chair of the University Faculty Senate on May 11, 2010. She will officially take office on August 25, 2010, to serve a two-year term. She is preparing for this assignment now in Paris.[277.02][277.02](Laughter). Trustee Manfred Philip is here and will continue as Acting Chair of the University Faculty Senate through August 24, 2010. Trustee Philip, we continue to value highly your devoted service and numerous contributions, both as UFS Chair and as a trustee. Thank you for your service on this Board.[304.83][304.83](Applause). I want to thank all of my fellow trustees who represented the Board at various joyful CUNY commencements that have taken place over the past several weeks. You all represented the Board and the university with great distinction. We join together with all the CUNY Presidents, faculty, and alumni in saluting our winning graduates, as the headline of a recent news story indicated. It is with great sadness that I note the passing of two prominent members of the CUNY family: Rhonda Copeland, a CUNY School of Law professor, prominent human rights attorney; and the passing, secondly, of Dr. Ethel R. Wolf, distinguished former Provost and a founder of the University Faculty Senate at Brooklyn College. They both passed away on May 6, 2010, and will be greatly missed. May I now call on trustee Rita DiMartino to present a resolution?
Resolution of appreciation, Dr. Robert E. Paswell. Whereas Dr. Robert E. Paswell was named interim president of the City College of New York effective October 15, 2009, by the Board of Trustees, and whereas Dr. Paswell, a distinguished professor of civil engineering in the Grove School of Engineering, has taught at City College since 1990 and has extensive executive leadership experience in the public sector, and whereas Dr. Paswell's tenure as interim president was notable for his deep engagement in the advancement of the college's academic mission and the development of its faculty and students, including his efforts to organize and officiate at Frontiers in Physics, a day-long symposium at which five prominent physicists from leading U.S. and European universities explored the future of their discipline, and whereas, in his capacity as interim president, Dr. Paswell continued his longtime advocacy on behalf of public higher education, building on his service as a member of the New York State Commission on Higher Education, a blue-ribbon panel that included academic leaders from public and private colleges and universities, and whose 2008 report called for major policy changes to improve the state's higher education system. And whereas, Dr. Paswell continues to be recognized internationally as an expert on transportation operations, management, and planning, having served as Executive Director of the Chicago Transit Authority from 1986 to 1989, and serving as Director and Chief Executive Officer of the University Transportation Research Center for Region Two since coming to City College in 1990, as well as Director of the CUNY Institute for Urban Systems since 2001. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Robert E. Paswell for his distinguished service as interim president of the City College of New York.
I'll second the motion. Adopted by acclamation. May I now call on trustee Peter Pantaleo?
This is a resolution in appreciation of Dr. Stan Altman. Whereas, Dr. Stan Altman was named interim president of Baruch College effective August 31, 2009, by the Board of Trustees, and whereas, Dr. Altman, a professor in Baruch School of Public Affairs, served as the dean of the school from 1999 to 2005, and has held a number of executive leadership positions in public higher education, including Deputy to the President at SUNY Stony Brook, and Associate Provost for Health Policy at SUNY, and whereas, Dr. Altman trained as an engineer and was one of the early vanguard of professionals with strong applied mathematics and engineering backgrounds, who chose to apply their skills to the delivery of public services, and who, in building a career to achieve his ambitious public-sector objectives, developed a powerful cross-disciplinary approach to problem-solving, and whereas, Dr. Altman's extensive public-service training, research, and experience was indispensable to his service as interim president, enabling him to offer colleagues sophisticated and well-grounded guidance in financial, administrative, and policy issues, and whereas, Dr. Altman's commitment to the vibrancy of New York extends beyond his university work and includes service as a member of the Independent Budget Office Board and the Board of Directors of the New York Chapter of the American Jewish Committee, and as Chair of the City Club of New York, and a member of numerous government and nonprofit advisory boards. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York expresses its heartfelt appreciation to Dr. Stan Altman for his distinguished service as interim president of Baruch College.
I'll second the resolution. All in favor? Adopted by acclamation. Now, I would like to call on trustee Valerie Beal to announce college and faculty honors.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Borough Manhattan Community College Senior Vice President of Academic Affairs and Professor of Mathematics, Sadie Bragg, recently received the Mathematics Excellence Award for educators who have made outstanding contributions in the field. She will be sharing this award with Ohio State University Emeritus Professor Ed Laubron. Congratulations. CUNY Law School Professor Richard Straro was named a Fulbright Scholar for the 2010-2011 academic year to conduct research on restrictions and assisted reproduction in Barcelona, Spain, next fall. Congratulations. And LaGuardia Community College Professor and Director of its Commercial Photography Program, Scott Sternbach, has a collection of his photographs included in Race to the End of the Earth, a new major American Museum of Natural History exhibition. Congratulations. This concludes my report.
Thank you very much. May I call on trustee Kathleen Pacilli to announce student and alumni honors?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Four CUNY students received National Science Foundation Graduate Research Fellowships. They are Macaulay Honors College at City College student Igor Labutov, Queens College student Andrea Marie Balbas, Hunter College student Joyce Kim, and Lehman College graduate student Daniel Kulakowski. Congratulations. Two CUNY students received Fulbright grants, and they are Macaulay Honors College at Hunter student is Lauren Vrienz and Heidi Exlin. Also a student at Hunter College, Baruch College student Zoe Blackwood won the 2010 Colin Powell Fellowship. Congratulations. Four Kingsborough Community College students were among the seven students comprising of the fifth cohort of Kaplan Scholars. They are Alexis Dyer, Rosa Frius, Mammy Shirang, and LeVar Thomas. Three Kingsborough students, Amina Ali, Marcela Mohammed, and Sherilyn Novinski, were among 25 Franklans and Memorial Scholarship recipients. Kingsborough graduate Kieshaun Deane was awarded a Bell Zeller Scholarship. The multimedia news outlet run out of the CUNY Graduate School of Journalism, known as the New York City News Service, was named Best Independent Online Student Publication in the Country by the Society for Professional Journalists. Congratulations. City College 2009 alumna Maria Royo won a silver medal at the Academy of Motion Picture Arts and Sciences 37th Annual Student Academy Award Ceremony recently for Rediscovering Pape, her MFA thesis film. City College students have now garnered three silver medals in the past five years. Congratulations. Two CUNY students are among nine finalists selected from 200 applicants, who are featured in Take America to College video series. Baruch College history major Alfatah Kadhar in Working for a Degree, and Meghur Everest College Biology major Carolyn Sealy in Parents as Students. Congratulations. Seven Ostos Community College students were among 14 students who received scholarships and citations from New York City Controller John Liu at the recent annual Puerto Rican Day Parade Scholarship Reception. Congratulations. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, I have an additional comment. This past weekend, the College of Staten Island hosted an American Kennel Club dog show for the Staten Island Kennel Club. I want to personally thank the students from CSI and their student government, as well as the CUNY Coalition for Students with Disabilities, representing Queens, Baruch, CSI, and Hunter Colleges. Their participation in making the show a great success, they were really terrific, and they are CUNY ambassadors. I cannot tell you how many people commented on their assistance. There are three representatives here today, and I'd just like to acknowledge them. They are Ms. Antoinette Stallone, Lilet Lopez, and Gisilia Small. Thank you for your job well done.[996.82][996.82](Applause). Mr. Chairman, that now concludes my report.
Thank you very much. You have a list of grants and gifts received by the university since our April 26, 2010 meeting, available on the table and in your calendar books. I'd like now to call on Chancellor Goldstein to present his report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the Board. Let me start by acknowledging the very good work of Manfred Philip over these past several years, working very closely with the administration. Really appreciated the collaboration and the collegiality of that relationship. When I asked Buzz Paswell and Stan Altman to jump in at a time that we needed really inspire leadership because of the departure of two Presidents, both of them were ready to do the job, and I must say to the members of the Board and to our audience, and certainly to the fellow Presidents and members of the Chancellery, these are two gentlemen that did an extraordinary job. I slept better at night knowing that both of you were at the helm, and you really did wonderful work, not putting on the brakes, but lightly pressing on the accelerator to keep those two very important institutions going. So I deeply appreciate your friendship and your work as well. Mr. Chairman, CUNY granted approximately 38,500 degrees this past year, which really is quite extraordinary, and these are young women and young men, and not-so-young men and young women going out and making their way in the world, and their CUNY degree is giving them the wind in the sails to really do important work, not only for the society in which they are working, but for advancing their personal goals as well. And it's always a pleasure, as all of us will agree, to participate in these wonderful commencement exercises. We had a wonderful group of people from outside the university to participate as commencement addresses. U.S. Supreme Court Justice Sonia Sotomayor, who I really got to spend a fair amount of time with, gracious, bright, energetic, really, the Ostos community was elated by her presence. And Phelo, thank you for arranging for that. It was really quite wonderful. Leon Letterman, whose career I have followed for many years, is the guy who predicted a particle called the Bose particle, Biggs particle, Bose-Biggs particle, and hopefully with the new accelerator churning in Geneva, we will see whether the predictions of this extraordinary fellow or graduate of City College will come to fruition. Best-selling author R.L. Stein, whose ghost story was told at the Macaulay Honors College, I will never forget that story, and he really did a wonderful job. Governor Patterson, Mayor Bloomberg, many, many other people contributed to the celebratory atmosphere of those wonderful commencement exercises. We are seeing an approximately 3% increase in summer enrollment from last year. CUNY continues to be a place where people want to study, not only in the city, but outside of New York State, coming to CUNY to advance their goals. We do have about 2,500 students that I've reported on in the past, on the waitlist, waiting to get into CUNY in the fall. We expect, over the summer, that many of them will be admitted to schools as the flow in and out of the university continues unabated. We are providing, under the leadership of Executive Vice Chancellor Alexa Loog, the CUNY START Program, which gives opportunities to any of those students on the waitlist, opportunities to the university to shore up their academic skills, because many of them are slated to go to a community college, and if we can get them past the remedial courses that they would need to take in order to get into credit-bearing courses, we hope that this will not slow down their efforts to advance their education at CUNY. On June 22, the university testified at a New York City Council hearing regarding justice issue that I just mentioned. We were ably represented by Alexa Loog, interim Vice Chancellor Peter Jordan, Presidents Regina Perugia, Jennifer Rab, and Felix Matos Rodriguez, and I want to thank all of you for the very good work that you did in representing the university's interests. Obviously, the Chancellery has been very, very much involved in the budget negotiations that are probably the most chaotic and confusing and hard-to-predict set of outcomes that I have seen at my tenure at this university. Not only are we watching very clearly all of the actions that may be taken with respect to the overall budget for the university, but we are particularly interested in Governor Patterson's representations about higher education, principally about the Education Empowerment and Innovation Act. And I have talked to you about this before, and I just want to make sure all of you understand our position, which has been invariant over time. We are the first university, this administration and this Board is the first administration and Board of a public university in New York State that has, for the past eight years, tried to convince the members of the legislature and the governors about the importance of getting a rational process around the enactment of tuition. A rational tuition policy for us is a sine qua non for healthy planning, and we have not been able to break through that barrier, and I can say even up to this point. We did have a couple of years where the legislature basically gave us a pass, and we made significant investments. All of the Presidents around the room know about the investments that we have made, absent additional revenue that has come in, other than through this compact idea that was based on the rational policy for tuition. When I testified with Chancellor Nancy Zimfer and Governor Patterson several weeks ago in Albany, when I was asked about the empowerment program, I said, "My interest is primarily about getting a rational policy finally in place so that we could have predictable increases in tuition, understanding full well that any student that would be placed in harm's way as a result of those actions, we would find a way within the financial aid that is available through the state and the federal government and our own resources, that we would keep those students whole and keep them out of harm's way so that they can maintain their matriculation." I also said that it was critically important that this university gets some relief on some of the regulatory burdens that we face in our procurement practices at this university. The procurement practices now are somewhat arcane, and from where I sit, are not the most efficacious way of managing the way in which we purchase equipment, the way in which we do deals in real estate, and it compromises our ability to act decisively, and we would be more than happy to open the books in a post-audit to show that we act responsibly. That was part of the Governor's proposal as well. The Governor had some other ideas with respect to this empowerment program, some of those we sort of passed on because we did not think that they were truly in the best interest of CUNY. But for us, overall, we need to have a tuition policy that makes sense, which is embedded into this program. We need a way to look at market conditions and price elasticity and the manner in which we charge for our services, and we certainly need relaxation, if you will, or a restart in the way in which procurement is done. I don't know where this is going to go, because Governor obviously has been very, very vocal and very supportive of this. The state legislature, as of minutes ago, continued to have serious concern, and we are working as hard as we can to get our sense of how the empowerment program could be shaped so that this university's opportunities could be realized. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just pause for one moment and indicate another component of this that has troubled me greatly. I was deeply concerned, because my concern is always about our students. How are our students going to fare when, really, major policy decisions are made in Albany? How would the students ultimately be able to manage their affairs? And when we looked at some parts of the empowerment program, we saw that some of our most vulnerable students could be placed in harm's way unless there was some way to change the TAP ceiling that New York State has as the corner piece of its financial aid program. And we were successful with the state legislature changing the pattern of how TAP would be done, and I feel a lot more comfortable that if indeed this legislation finds the light of day, that we will ensure that our students that have full TAP now will be able to continue to have full TAP, because the tuition schedule would be aligned with a TAP schedule, and for me, that was a major victory in terms of our lobbying efforts on behalf of students. But if I can pause for a moment, Mr. Chairman, and ask Mark Shaw, if he could jump in just for a minute. Mark, probably more than anybody in my administration, really has the background and the experience dealing with the nuances and complexity of how the budgeting world works in Albany. If he could just take a moment and sort of give a sense of where he sees things going and how things have arrived to where they are today, that might be very helpful for some of us. Mark? Mark?
As Mr. Logue just said, to have a conversation about chaos theory. You know, just to provide a little background to everybody about where the empowerment act fits into the current, you know, chaos of Albany, you have to step back and sort of appreciate what they're trying to deal with. What Albany's been trying to deal with, and one of the reasons why its budget is 86 days late now and counting, is that the governor proposed a budget that tried to fill a $9 billion problem. And the $9 billion problem, as the legislature was trying to negotiate what it could do and not do, whether it was doing borrowings, raising taxes, cutting services, as the debate continued and the budget got late, they essentially reached a three-way staff-level agreement on about $6 billion of the problem. And, you know, it's just like anything else, when you're down to your last $3 billion, it gets a little tougher. And so, that's when things really started to get stuck in Albany, because people didn't want to do cuts anymore, they didn't want to do tax increases anymore. There was some discussion of borrowing led by Lieutenant Governor Ravitch that, for the most part, has fallen by the wayside for a variety of reasons. And as things got stuck like that, that's when the governor came back and said, you know, "It's time to put a little more pressure on the legislature," and that's when the governor started sending up in his weekly emergency appropriations some sections of the budget. And it was reported in the press as major progress, because they were at least getting some parts of the budget done. In truth, while it was progress at one level, it... I'm just turning off my phone from ringing from Albany. While it showed some progress, all that occurred over the last month or so on the emergency appro... starting to put together portions of the budget was back to the agreed-to $6 billion. They never got to any of the really controversial things, so that's one of the reasons why government was able to continue in the appropriate emergency appropriations, even with the programmatic things, that they did economic development, they did transportation, they did health or parts of health and mental health. They got done simply because that was part of the $6 billion of the $9 billion problem that needed to get dealt with. So, as people got tired of trying to get to the last part of the game, if you will, the end game of this, out of frustration, the governor last week announced that he was going to put the rest of the budget in the emergency approach this week, and there would be one final vote by the legislature. When he announced that on Friday, he put a number of things into that appropriation that various houses of the legislature, for their own reasons, considered to be poison pills. What that did effectively was it finally brought the two houses of the legislature together, and Friday night, they announced that they had reached a two-way agreement on the remainder of the spending portion of the budget. And they put those bills on the desks at Friday at midnight, and that, in theory, is what they're passing potentially today. It gets a little more complicated, but it was action caused by the governor to force the legislature finally to act, and the Assembly and Senate got together, they put together their spending plan. What that effectively means was that what was left out of it was they still had a couple issues left on the revenue side of the budget, and of course, in their spending plan, the legislature has what's called legislative initiatives, or in normal parlance, member items that people see, and are very important to individual legislators. The governor, upon hearing this, announced that, "Well, if they don't reach a final agreement with him, he's going to veto those member items." So, put on the side that, you know, in order for the legislature to get their legislative initiatives done in this budget process, they still have to reach some sort of agreement with the governor, because otherwise, the governor will simply veto them, and they don't have the votes to override the veto, at least in the Senate. At the same time, they didn't put into that final budget proposal the empowerment act, and they didn't put the empowerment act into it for two reasons. One, technically, it wasn't part of the spending plan in the budget, because amongst other things, the empowerment act as proposed by the governor technically moved off-budget all of the spending that flows through the state right now to SUNY and CUNY in terms of the tuition revenue. So, there was no actual appropriation language in the budget itself, it was contained in a separate, what's called an Article VII bill, which are the accompanying pieces of legislation to complete the budget. And so, in the actions that the legislature did over the weekend, they didn't touch the issue for that technical reason. In addition, they didn't touch the issue, because it remains an outstanding issue between those houses, and more importantly, between the Assembly and the governor. And the governor has made clear that it's one of the most important items that he wants in the budget. So, voila, we're sitting here, you know, sort of waiting for an end game in Albany, where the most important thing the governor wants in the budget, the empowerment act, the most important, one of the most important things the legislature needs the governor for legislative initiatives or member items, are still outstanding. And, you know, if this was a rational process, the way I'm describing it, it would be very simple. You'd put three men in a room, the way they usually do, and it would be pretty easy to reach a compromise and complete the budget process. That's what needs to get done, whether it gets done today, or tonight, or tomorrow, or the next day, is still totally up in the air, because they're continuing to fight. The latest from Albany right now is that the Senate doesn't have the votes to pass the bill that they agreed to with the legislature the other day. They probably also don't have the votes to pass the governor's bill either, so we're back to an issue of whether or not anything's going to happen today. But, you know, those are the points at which usually things do eventually happen, and so, when all is then done, I'm a teeny bit optimistic that, in a final budget agreement, the empowerment act, because it's so important to the governor, will get taken up, and I'm comforted by the fact that one of the issues the Assembly has with the governor's proposal is the issue of affordability and bringing the TAP schedule as a state policy up to whatever the increases are in tuition that are allowed in the empowerment act. So, you know, it's possible that we end up with a better result at the end of the day or at the end of the next couple of days.
Thank you, Mark. Let me just, and Mark, that was very comprehensive and very helpful. Let me continue, Mr. Chairman. I'll move very quickly to the city budget. Just this past Thursday, the mayor and the City Council Speaker Christine Quinn announced an agreement for the 2011 city budget. While the budget has not been formally adopted, and there are lots of details that we need to understand better, I'm optimistic that the community colleges will see, receive restorations of a little over $21 million in prior-year reductions that were in the executive budget proposal. We expect the City Council to adopt the budget within the next day or two, and will issue a formal communication, which I typically do, to the board and the presidents. Listening to Mark Shaw, you could understand why, when I asked him to join the administration, not only was I anticipating getting somebody as erudite and as experienced about matters of budgeting in both the city and the state of New York, but he also has a very real interest in policy, and we are in the very early stages of working with the new president of Baruch College, Mitch Wallerstein, who I have talked to at great length about this idea. We expect Jennifer Rab at Hunter College to be a partner in this as well, and it's around an effort to create a new institute here at the university that will focus upon issues of city and state government at a policy level, and reimagining how, indeed, we might be able to reposition the City University of New York as it works with our principal providers in government, to allow this university to get the kind of opportunities, both legally and in regulation, and hopefully in budget as well, to move this university forward. This is part of a much grander scheme that the chairman and I participated in in 2008, when we brought to New York some of the top people in public higher education to talk about matters that we are deeply enmeshed in today. I worry deeply about the future of public higher education in the United States. It is not just CUNY and SUNY that are up to very serious challenges. We know what has happened in California, but looking around the country, the Midwest, the Far West, the South, places like Georgia, Florida, Mississippi, up along the Eastern Corridor as well, so many states have such very weak balance sheets that the prospect for further support of higher education does not look very promising in the short run. It is time for us to reimagine how public higher education can position itself in a contentious marketplace with for-profit organizations, with tremendous competition now from abroad, and with the disparity between the very top private universities and their war chests of endowment money, and somewhat suppressed as a result of the recession that we are still climbing out of. But we will have, here in New York, on November 9th and 10th, the second iteration of the program that the chairman and I really took a leadership in. Mark Udolph, who is the president of the University of California, and Michael Crowe, who is the president of Arizona State University, I don't know if you remember, they were our partners last year. We're going to bring in, and let me just indicate the states, and these are the top, you know, the CEOs, whether they're the president of the system or the chancellor of the system, these are the states that will be represented on the 9th and 10th. Colorado, Missouri, Ohio, Maryland, Florida, Iowa, Indiana, Nebraska, Oregon, Wisconsin, Florida, I said, and we will have Nancy Zimfer from, and Virginia, and we will also invite Nancy Zimfer, who is the chancellor of the State University of New York. We have this planned in a way that we will be doing webinars several weeks before these individuals arrive in New York, so that we can get the kind of interest spurred in the marketplace about the ideas that we have. We have a major editorial writer for The Times, we have Inside Education, the editor of Inside Education, Inside Higher Education, that will manage the webinars, and we will have a former writer of The New York Times, a very prominent person who has covered higher education nationally for many years, to be working with all of the presidents and chancellors that we're going to be bringing in, hopefully to come forward with fresh, new ideas to move this discussion forward. So, Mr. Chairman, I look forward to working again with you on that as we move forward. Let me just conclude with a few more things. This is particularly of interest to me, and I think is, we are at the right time for CUNY to really jump into this effort. You may remember in 2006, the U.S. Department of Education reported on the Spelling Commission on Higher Education, and as a result of that, there's been heightened interest and awareness of the importance of assessment of student learning at our colleges and universities. And that report was responsible for the increased pressure on higher education accrediting bodies to monitor not just good practices in higher education, but good learning outcomes. And these developments spurred colleges and universities towards two particular types of measurements, something that we have talked endlessly about, but we now want to put into action. The chairman and I have talked about it on many occasions, but now we are moving forward. The two measurements are how much students learn while in college, what is known as the value added by a college, and how a college's value added compares to that of other colleges around the nation. We need to participate, not only in a discussion of these matters, but really start to get the measurements that we need to see what happens when students arrive, what it is that they know, and what do students leave at the end of their experience at CUNY, and how does that level of experience and knowledge compare to our peer institutions? And we need to participate in a national database, so that we here, the board, chancellery, our presidents, really understand better than, quite frankly, we do now, how our students are doing. We made an attempt at doing this early on in this administration with the CUNY Proficiency Examination, which is a rising junior year and has worked quite effectively at the university. But there are two things that concern me about that. One, there's nothing to compare the data to. These are not nationally-normed examinations that we can learn from in terms of how our students are doing relative to populations of students outside of this university. Secondly, the examination, the actual cost of that examination, has increased explosively over time. We are now spending over $5 million a year just to administer that examination. It is an obscene amount of money. So, as a result of that, I have called for a task force to look at a rethinking, to bring us much more into the mainstream of comparing how we are doing in a national databank. I've asked Executive Vice Chancellor Lexa Logue, along with a large committee largely driven by faculty, to report out to me at an appropriate time, and then, Mr. Chairman, I expect to come back to the board with a recommendation. I think CUNY is now rightly positioned, with everything else that we have done, that we are ready now to play in the leagues to get to where it is that I think is important for us to get to. Let me just conclude by a few brief announcements. On Tuesday, June 22nd, we hosted with Michael Bloomberg a graduation recognition event at the Borough of Manhattan Community College for the ASAP students. Three and a half years ago, I had breakfast with the mayor, and I said to him, "I am not happy at all with graduation rates at community colleges. We have fabulous faculty in our community colleges, we're blessed with great presidents at our community colleges, but the fact remains is graduation rates at CUNY and nationally are much lower than any of us can accept, and we must do something about it." And he said, "Well, what did you have in mind?" And I indicated that we had an idea for a program. I'm not sure it would work, but we'd like to give it a try, and if it could work, we might be able to scale it up and have an impact in ways that we don't have now. I am proud to say that on June 22nd, the mayor and I stood up together, and we announced that the three-year graduation rates for the students that went into this ASAP, the accelerated study for associate programs, more than doubled, the rate of graduation more than doubled from what it is for the comparable group of students at CUNY. The comparable group of students, the three-year graduation rates, were about 24%. The announcement that we made was 53%. And we indicated together promises made, promises kept. The mayor made his pledge to put up $20 million on the program. I had pledged that we could reach 50%. I had pledged that we could reach 50%. We exceeded that number. The mayor indicated that this is just what he had hoped to happen and would like to continue to invest in ASAP and take it one additional step to use some of the ideas that we created in this program to rethink a new community college. So I want to thank everybody that's been involved, especially our community college presidents, who really took the lead here. They stood up and made this happen. John Mogalescu, I asked really as the person on my staff to look after this, Donna Lindeman, who John appointed, made this happen. This was an extraordinary event in the history, I think, of community colleges. It's gotten wide press nationally. Gates Foundation, other foundations, I get calls on a regular basis from other university presidents indicating to learn more about this. And so I think we're on to something, Mr. Chairman, that is special, and I do want to thank publicly the mayor for doing, to taking the risk, and for being there with us as we move forward in this very important program. And lastly, Mr. President, just a few congratulatory messages. President Carolyn Williams, who was appointed by the congressional leaders to the National Advisory Committee on Institutional Quality and Integrity. President Jennifer Rabb on receiving the Woman of Distinction Award from the League of Women Voters of the City of New York Education Fund. Congratulations to President Felix Matos Rodriguez. And Ostos on being selected as one of the 2010 Neighborhood Achievement Award winners by the mayor's office. Congratulations to President Tomas Morales on receiving the Golden Age Award from the Latino Center on Aging. Tomas is in West Virginia giving a talk just on those matters. Congratulations to Dean Ken Olden on being appointed to a four-year term to the Board of Directors of the National Environmental Education, effective April 2010. And to congratulate University Director of Language and Literacy Programs, Leslie Oppenheim, for being, for receiving a Career Achievement Award at the Annual Literacy Recognition Award. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Are there questions or comments from the trustees for the chancellor? All right. Thank you very much. I think that the conception of a new community college that can more than double graduation rates is a perfect example of CUNY's capacity to be a national leader and a national model in educational reform. So I want to echo, I know all the trustees would agree in echoing our thanks to all the people you named and all the many others who I know worked so hard to reconceptualize community college education in such a dramatically constructive way. So we're all very, very proud that this is a CUNY innovation. We now turn to policy items that require our votes. I will present the, I'll move the adoption of the chancellor's university report for June 28th, 2010. You have copies of the report on the table. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions for the chancellor on the report? Not all in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed, abstentions? The report is adopted. I'd like to move the approval of the minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of April 26th, 2010. You have a copy of the draft minutes in your meeting book. May I have a second on this?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about the minutes? Any necessary revisions? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, abstentions? Minutes are adopted. Now we will turn to the reports of our committees. We'll start with the Committee on Fiscal Affairs. I'd like to call on trustee Joe Loda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Fiscal Affairs met on June 7th, 2010, and approved three resolutions: Calendar Item 3A, 3B, and 3C. Subsequent to the meeting, the following item was received, which I present to the Board of Trustees at this time to avoid undue delay. A resolution authorizing the City College of New York to implement an increase in its parking fees beginning July 1st, 2010. The current general parking fee is $400 per year and will be increased to $600 per year, and reserved parking will go from $500 annually to $700 annually. Obviously, both parking fees increasing by $200 per year. City College evening students will not be subject to the increase. Evening students will, rates will remain at $150. The City College Auxiliary Enterprises Corporation, AEC, provides parking services to the City College campus. As an auxiliary enterprise function, parking services should generate sufficient revenue to cover the cost of its operating expenses, including security, insurance, repairs, and the long-term maintenance of the parking locations included in those in the North Academic Center and South Campus parking lots. Unfortunately, parking services is running a deficit, and AEC is requesting a fee increase to close the deficit and create a reserve for parking lot maintenance and reconstruction. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of this item.
May I have a second?
Second.
All right. Any questions for the committee on the item? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Item carries.
Okay. I will now present to the board the resolutions approved by the committee at its last meeting. Calendar Item 3A is a resolution authorized to college presidents, effective with the spring 2011 semester, to require the students who have been admitted to associate, baccalaureate, masters, and professional programs, a non-refundable commitment deposit of $100 for the undergraduate programs and $250 for master and professional programs indicating their intention to enroll in such programs. A commitment deposit enables the university's senior and community colleges to obtain more accurate enrollment data, which is critical to decisions relating to academic planning, faculty hiring, course offerings, and student services. While the deposit will be non-refundable for those students who do enroll, the amount of the commitment deposit will be credited towards the student's tuition. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3A.
May I hear a second?
Second.
Questions on the matter? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed, abstentions? Carries. Thank you.
Calendar Item 3B is a resolution authorized the General Counsel to execute an amendment to existing agreement number N-001005 with ACT Inc. on behalf of the university to extend the term of its, of the agreement for 30 months till June, excuse me, December 31st, 2012. The funding for such an extension period shall not exceed a total, shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $1 million. ACT provides testing services to the university to support high-volume assessments of student college readiness in the areas of reading, writing, and math in excess of 100,000 tests annually. The amendment extends the existing agreement term and adds funds for the continued provision services as the City University develops and issues a request for proposal and awards a new contract. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3B.
May I hear a second on 3B?
Second.
Any questions for the committee? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Are there any opposed, abstentions? 3B carries.
Calendar Item 3C is a resolution authorized the General Counsel to execute an amendment to the existing contract with KPMG Inc. on behalf of the City University to extend the term of its contract for three years to December 31st, 2012, for audit, tax, and advisory services. These services shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $2.2 million for the three-year period. These services support City University's statutory requirements to produce consolidated university financial statements for each fiscal year. This extension ensures continuity of services as City University completes its transition to the, to the CUNY, CUNY First financial system. Mr. Chairman, I move the approval and adoption of Calendar Item 3C.
I'll second it. Are there questions on the item? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Item carries.
Following the approval of the action items by the committees, the independent audit firm of KPMG made a presentation on their 2010 audit plan. In addition, Mr. Chairman, Associate Vice Chancellor Matthew Sapienza gave an update on the ever-evolving state and city budgets, followed by the Chief Investment Officer Janet Crohn, who gave an investment report and an update on our investment portfolio. Mr. Chairman, this concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Academic Policy, Programs, and Research. I'd like to call on trustee Wellington Chen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. At this meeting on June 7th, the committee approved 10 policy matters. Calendar Number 4A, Graduate School and University Center. Joint registration will all baccalaureate programs offered at Baruch, Brooklyn, City, Hunter, Lehman, Queens, and Staten Island colleges. This resolution authorizes the Graduate School and University Center to offer joint degrees to Macaulay Honors College students who graduate from the seven CUNY senior colleges that participate in the Macaulay Honors College program. This action will showcase Macaulay College, Honor Colleges' success in attracting and remaining outstanding students. Calendar Number 4B, Hunter College, Letter of Intent for Doctor of Nursing Practice Program. The proposed program is designed to prepare advanced practice nurses who can provide evidence-based, cost-effective, high-quality care for persons from a wide range of cultural backgrounds. The proposed program is expected to fulfill a strong local, regional, and national need for doctorally-prepared, advanced practice nurses with strong clinical competencies who are prepared for leadership positions in the changing healthcare system. Calendar Number 4C, College of Staten Island, BA in Italian Studies and Italian Studies Adolescent Education Programs, Grade 7 through 12. The BA in Italian Studies program will provide a traditional liberal arts education in Italian language and literature, and the Italian Studies Adolescent Education, Grade 7 through 12, program will provide the expertise while also leading to the New York State Teacher Certification in Secondary Education. Forty percent of Staten Island's residents claim Italian ancestry. These programs will provide a vehicle for the college to create stronger ties with civic and professional organizations on the island. Calendar Number 4D, the City College of New York, MFA in Digital and Art Practice. This is a professional graduate program designed to provide students with the knowledge and skills to prepare them as either professional multimedia artists or academics. The program is funded in part by $5 million from the Connor Fund. City College has complementary programs on both their graduate and undergraduate levels. Calendar Number 4E, the City College of New York, four graduate programs for teaching Spanish in secondary schools. These four master degrees programs will prepare students for careers in teaching Spanish. Four separate programs are necessary to accommodate students with varied academic programs in either Spanish or secondary education. Calendar Number 4F, Queensboro Community College, York College, due joint ASBS in biotechnology. This joint program is designed to prepare students to become technicians in modern biotechnology operations and will build on strength of the faculty at both Queensboro Community College and York College. The joint registration will provide Queensboro community students with guaranteed transfer for all 60 credits either acquired at Queensboro and admission into York College four-year program. Calendar Number 4G, LaGuardia Community College, AAS in Industrial Design Technology. This program will provide students with basic knowledge and skill necessary to design and fabricate three-dimensional prototypes. LaGuardia's Community Education Division has 8,000 square feet of studio space where students can build their prototypes. Calendar Number 4H, LaGuardia Community College, AAS in Environmental Science. This program will serve two related purposes. First, it will prepare students for entry-level jobs in areas such as pollution control, land and water, ecology, and nature conservation. It will provide students with the first two years of coursework toward a bachelor's science degree at Queens College. Calendar Number 4I, CUNY Remote Sensing of the Earth Science and Technology Institute. This institute, housed at City College, will conduct research on the Earth's environment. Over the past seven years, the faculty associated with the institute has received over $90 million in funding from NSF, NASA, and other sources. Calendar Number 4J, Brooklyn College, Reorganization of Department of Economics and Establishment of a new Department of Accounting and a new Department of Finance. These changes will result in a reorganization of faculty into appropriate disciplines, which will enhance scholarship and research, and will improve curriculum development, educational opportunities. Mr. Chairman, Items 4A through 4J were approved by the committee, and I recommend their approval by the board.
Thank you very much. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions for the committee on any of these items? If not, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, abstentions? All those items carry. Anything further from the committee?
No, sir. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Enough. Thank you very much. Let's turn to the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. I'd like to call on trustee Valerie Beal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Board Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration met on June 7th, 2010 to consider a number of items which we will now present to the board for approval. In addition, two items, 5F and 5G, arose after our meeting and have been added to the calendar as they are of sufficient importance to warrant their consideration by the board today. I will introduce Item 5F, and I understand that you, Mr. Chair, will introduce Item 5G. The regular calendar items are as follows. Item 5A amends the university's nondiscrimination policy to prohibit employment discrimination on the basis of citizenship or immigration status and unfair practices with regard to the I-9 employment eligibility verification process. These amendments are required by the recent settlement of a lawsuit brought against the university by the U.S. Department of Justice. The university will also revise its procedures on nondiscrimination and sexual harassment to comply with settlement agreement. Second, the policy has been amended to clarify that under the university's discrimination complaint procedure, all complaints of discrimination, including those brought by students, shall be investigated by the campus's affirmative action, compliance, and diversity officers who are specifically trained to investigate such complaints. Mr. Chair, I present Item 5A for the board's approval.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions on the nondiscrimination policy? Not? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed, abstentions? 5A is adopted.
Thank you. Item 5B amends the governance plan of the university center to establish the CUNY School of Public Health at Hunter College as an independent unit of the university center, effective July 1st, 2010. The School of Public Health, which will offer baccalaureate, masters, and doctoral degrees in public health and related disciplines, has successfully passed the first stage of the accreditation process and now requires a governance structure in order to move to the next stage. The School of Public Health is a consortium program involving four CUNY institutions: Hunter, Brooklyn, Lehman College, and the Graduate School and University Center, who have collaborated with public health faculty, administrations, administrators, and the university faculty center to create this governance plan. Mr. Chair, I present Item 5B for the board's approval.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Are there any questions for the committee on 5B? Professor Philip?
Just a comment. I'd like to thank Vice Chancellor Schaefer for his discussions with us on this item. Vice Chancellor Schaefer has assured us that, as we consider that to some degree a work in progress, that continuing concerns will be addressed through the bylaw process inside the school, and that there'll be a review of governance in the coming year.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? That item carries.
Thank you. Items 5C and 5D pertain to two namings at the City College of New York and Hunter College, which I will present together. Naming of the Joel Zicknick class of 1954 and Barbara OZeltnik conference room at the City College of New York, and naming of the Patricia Phelps Cisneros Professor of Latin American Art at Hunter College. The gifts associated with Items 5... The gifts associated with items 5C and D total $2 million. The Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration has reviewed these matters to ensure their compliance with the guidelines and recommends their approval by the Board. Mr. Chair, I present items 5C and 5D for the Board's approval.
I'll second those items. Are there questions for the committee or comments? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Those items are adopted.
Thank you. Items 5E designates five new distinguished professors. I now present for the Board's consideration the appointments of the following distinguished professors effective September 1st, 2010. The committee has reviewed each of these appointments and is pleased to recommend their approval. The appointment of Uday Singh Mehta as distinguished professor in the Department of Political Science at the Graduate School and University Center. The appointment of Alva Noah as distinguished professor in the Department of Philosophy at the Graduate School and University Center. The appointment of Paul Julian Smith as distinguished professor in the Department of Hispanic, Luso-Brazilian Literatures and Languages at the Graduate School and University Center. The appointment of Mac Wellman as distinguished professor in the Department of English at Brooklyn College, and the appointment of Thomas Slay as distinguished professor in the Department of English at Hunter College. Mr. Chair, I present these appointments for the Board's approval.
I'd like to second the motion. Any comments or questions for the committee before we vote on these matters? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Those five appointments are adopted.
Mr. Chair, I am delighted that distinguished professor Uday Singh Mehta is able to join us today. I would like to invite President William Kelly to introduce him to the Board. President Kelly?
Thank you, trustee Beal. It's been another banner year for faculty recruitment at the Graduate Center. Nine senior scholars, each with a significant international reputation, have joined our faculty. I want to acknowledge with gratitude the unstinting and enthusiastic support of Chancellor Goldstein in enabling these efforts. Three of these scholars have just come before you today. Professor Julian Smith, who joins our Hispanic and Luso-Brazilian program from Cambridge University, and Professor Alva Noah, who joins the Philosophy program from Berkeley, are traveling outside of the United States and are unable to be present. We are, however, fortunate to have Professor Uday Singh Mehta with us today. Professor Mehta comes to the Graduate Center from Amherst College, where he was the Charles Francis Professor in the Social Sciences. Professor Mehta has also taught at Columbia, Penn, Chicago, MIT, and Princeton. He has been a Carnegie Scholar and has received the American Political Science Association's annual Greenstone Award for the best book in history and theory. He holds a baccalaureate degree in Philosophy and Mathematics from Swarthmore, a master's degree in the Philosophy of the Social Sciences and Ancient Political Philosophy from Princeton, and a doctorate in Political Philosophy also from Princeton. There's no exaggeration to say that Professor Mehta is one of the world's most influential political theorists, a scholar whose expertise ranges across ancient, modern, continental American, and post-colonial traditions. But to lodge only that claim is to scant the full significance of Professor Mehta's scholarship. His work extends well beyond the bounds of what we think of as political science and operates at the intersection where philosophy, history, anthropology, and political theory engage each other in fruitful dialogue. His first book, The Anxiety of Freedom: Imagination in Individuality and Locke's Political Thought, published by the University of Chicago Press, demonstrated that the universality claimed by liberal thought was not only compatible with colonialism but that it justified it. That fundamental critique has shed new light on our understanding of identity and the state, and in so doing, has influenced scholarship in history, geography, sociology, and psychology as well as in political science. Perhaps most notably, it has helped us to see Locke anew, leading to significant recalibrations of his conception of the self. Professor Mehta's second book, Liberalism and Empire: A Study in Nineteenth-Century British Liberal Thought, published by the University of Chicago Press, is a magisterial study that builds on the achievement of the anxiety of freedom, a powerful contribution to the post-colonial critique of Eurocentrism. Liberalism and Empire expands our understanding of the relationship between citizenship and colonialism. It does so by thinking about the West and the non-West together rather than separately, combining insightful readings of Burke and Mill with readings of the literature of colonial rule in nineteenth-century India. Among its many virtues is its extraordinary lucidity. The pleasures of Professor Mehta's texts are such that one of our referees told us that liberalism and empire's only weakness is that it ends too soon. Can't say that about too many academic books. Professor Mehta's current work builds on the themes of liberalism and identity, empire and colonization, but his intellectual purview has grown to encompass Gandhi and other non-Western thinkers. In particular, he has turned his attention to war and theories of nonviolence, focusing on the partitioning of Kashmir. His orientation continues to be productively comparative. His interest in constitutionalism has moved beyond India and Pakistan to involve Israel, South Africa, and the United States. Professor Mehta is as distinguished a teacher and colleague as he is a scholar. After praising his work with doctoral students, another of our referees wrote, and I quote, "But even more than a mentor, he is a creator of buzz, a relentless generator of ideas and excitement." We value buzz at the Graduate Center, and we are thrilled to welcome Professor Mehta to our ranks. I commend him to you with great enthusiasm.
Welcome, Professor Mehta. Would you care to respond to the Board?
I just want to thank the Board. I feel humbled by this citation. I look forward to teaching at the Graduate Center. I've had some connection with it in the past, and I really do look forward to deepening that connection. I thank all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, item 5F was added to today's calendar. It establishes the School of Urban Public Health as an independent school within Hunter College. The Council on Education for Public Health, which is the accrediting body for programs of this nature, has advised us that the health program at Hunter College must be freestanded and have the same rights and responsibility as other colleges and schools in order to be accredited. Accordingly, this resolution removes the urban public health program from the School of Health Sciences and constitutes it as a separate school with all the associated rights and responsibilities, including a personnel and budget committee. Mr. Chair, I present item 5F for the Board's approval.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any questions on this item? Not all in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Item is adopted.
Mr. Chair, I would like to note that the committee received a report from University Dean Jennifer Rubain on the status of diversity in the university. We agreed to have follow-up conversations on this most important issue. This concludes my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I would like to add an item for the Board's consideration as item 5G. You'll find a copy of the resolution that I am moving at page 10 of your calendar books. This is a resolution that would enable the City University of New York to participate in a retirement incentive program that was recently approved by the New York State Legislature and by the governor. I will call on Vice Chancellor Gloriana Waters to explain this resolution to you, and following that, I will ask for a second, and we can take the matter up. Vice Chancellor Waters?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two parts to this incentive. Part A offers additional service credit to eligible employees in defined benefit plans or an additional contribution for eligible employees in the optional retirement program. Eligible employees are those who are at least age fifty with ten years of service. Part B offers the opportunity for eligible employees in defined benefit plans who are age fifty-five or over with at least twenty-five years of service to retire without benefit reductions that would ordinarily be applied for anyone retiring before age sixty-two. The resolution before you sets the open periods for participation in the ERI and delegates to the chancellor the authority to exclude specific titles from participation in Part A. Under the statute, members of the executive compensation plan are ineligible to participate in either Part A or Part B. Participation in the ERI will provide the university with flexibility to address the current fiscal challenges it faces. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there a plan to communicate? If the Board adopts this resolution, is there a plan to communicate with the faculty and staff to explain the opportunities that are presented by this plan?
Absolutely. There are a number of communications that have already been drafted. We're just waiting for the Board to approve. Furthermore, there will be workshops and sessions, in-person sessions, available for people to come and actually have counseling with the pension systems, as well as to hear from us about the advantages of participating in the program.
All right. Are there any questions for Vice Chancellor Waters on this resolution? May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Resolution carries. Thank you very much. That concludes the matters from the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. We'll turn to the Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. I'd like to call on trustee Rita Foster.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Facilities Planning and Management met on June 7th, 2010. The Board of Trustees Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered six items at this meeting. These action items are listed in the calendar for the Board meeting as calendar items 6A to 6H. Item A, Brooklyn College, Campus-Wide Fire Alarm and Security System Upgrades. Because of building expansion across the campus, existing alarm systems need to be expanded and upgraded to be brought to code. This contract will enable completion of Phase One of this campus-wide upgrade. Work includes a feasibility study, a new central command station in Ingersoll Hall, and installation of new infrastructure. Item B, Hostos Community College, the 475 Grand Concourse ADA renovation project. With limited renovation since 1970, this project will convert the building's twenty existing restrooms to twelve, six men and six women, that are ADA compliant, larger, more energy and water efficient, and easier to clean. Item C, Lehman College, new modular childcare center. An increasing demand for campus daycare facilities prompted plans to construct an expanded childcare facility within the vacant T2 building. When the T2 site was chosen and said for the college's new science facility, it was decided to install a modular building at another site on campus to house the proposed childcare facility. Item D, City University of New York Lease Extension for CUNY in the Heights. Located in Washington Heights section of Manhattan, these facilities are used to provide general education programs for the residents of northern Manhattan. These programs are jointly administered by BMCC and Hostos. This resolution will authorize a one-year extension of the current lease at 620 Isham Street, also known as 108 Cooper Street. Item E, City University of New York Lease Renewal of One Metro Tech Center in Brooklyn on behalf of Medgar Evers College. Office space at One Metro Tech Center in Brooklyn is used by Medgar Evers College for administrative functions. It is hoped that these functions will eventually be relocated back to the campus once space becomes available there. This resolution will authorize the current lease to be renewed for another sixteen months. Item F, the new lease at 50 West 40th Street, which is the former Catherine Gibbs School. It is already outfitted for classrooms, offices, and relevant support space, and will require minimal renovation to accommodate the college's needs. This resolution will authorize a new tenure lease of these facilities. Item G, new lease at 132 West 31st Street. The CUNY School of Professional Studies currently operates from a variety of locations scattered throughout Manhattan. The facility at West 31st Street has been identified as a suitable central location for consolidating the school's academic and administrative functions. This resolution will authorize a new fifteen-year lease of these facilities. Item H, purchase of vacant parcel at 3069 Villa Avenue in the Bronx on behalf of Lehman College. The college's School of Nursing is housed in the T3 building currently slated for the demolition to make way for a Phase Two construction of the college's new science facility. There being no suitable space elsewhere on campus for the nursing school, a vacant lot nearby has been identified as suitable for constructing a modular building that can house the school temporarily until such time as the school can be relocated back on campus. At that time, the site and modular building will be put to use for other academic programs of the college as needed. Mr. Chairman, I now present item 6A to the Board for approval. The committee did not consider this item as it was received subsequent to our meeting. The item is being presented to the Board at this time in order to avoid undue delay. Item I, City University of New York New Lease at 205 Hudson Street on behalf of Hunter College. The Hunter College Master of Fine Arts program is currently housed in a university-owned facility at 450 West 41st Street. That is in serious disrepair and in need of rehabilitations that would be prohibitively expensive. Instead, the university proposes to relocate the MFA program to a new lease site at 205 Hudson Street, which can provide the program with studios, classrooms, offices, and gallery space, and consider its options with regard to disposition of the facility at 450 West 41st Street. I hereby request your approval of these calendar items.
I'm happy to second all those items. Are there questions on any matters? Dr. Morales?
Yes. I see that the extension of the lease in CUNY on the Heights. CUNY on the Heights is a very important extension of CUNY in the upper Manhattan. They're doing a wonderful job there. My question is, a year goes very fast. What's going to be happening the following year? Are we going to be doing that every year, or there is any plan to do something more definite in allocation?
I will defer that to Vice Chancellor.
Wainshall?
Dr. Morales, we continue to look for additional space up in that area. Well, it's a bit of a challenge because, just what you noted, there are certain needs that are required for an educational building. In particular, it's got to be ADA compliant, has to be able to have the type of wiring and the type of space, and we're just hopeful that maybe this year we'll be able to strike a deal up in that part of Manhattan.
I'm only hoping that it's not going to be a year after year, a year after year, because as I say, you know, this extension is doing a great, great job there. People start, begin to question the CUNY interest in doing or not doing anything on there.
All right. Professor Phillip?
I'd like to thank Vice Chancellor Wainshall for the enormous efforts to get additional renovation and construction in this university. Despite all these efforts, we always need more, just as we've heard, and I think we, as a Board, need to eventually have a report on the other facilities that have been financed and a report on perhaps on the financing of facilities. I'm particularly concerned about the new building at New York City Technical College, College of Technology, which is, newspaper reports have that the state may not find in last $78 million or so. But I just wanted to bring that to the Board's attention. But again, thank you for your reference.
All right. Are there other comments or questions? Not? Are you ready? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Abstentions? Those items are all adopted.
Thank you. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll turn next to the Committee on Student Affairs, Special Programs. I'd like to call on trustee Kathleen Facilie.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Committee on Student Affairs and Special Programs recommends six items for the Board's approval. I will ask for the vote on all six items at the end. Calendar item 7A, Baruch College, Student Activity Fee Increase in the Undergraduate Students. This resolution provides for an increase of $25 in student activity fee paid by full-time undergraduate students and $15 for part-time undergraduate students at Baruch College. The resolution also provides for an increase of $12.85 in the summer session fee. The college president supports the increases. Calendar item 7B, Baruch College, Student Activity Fee Increases in Graduate Students. This resolution seeks an increase of $10 in the student activity fee paid by graduate students at Baruch College. students at Baruch College. The college president supports the fee increase. Calendar item 7C, Lehman College, Student Activity Fee Increase. This resolution seeks an increase of $19 in the student activity fee paid by the students in the fall and spring semesters, and an increase of $7.50 in the summer session student activity fee at Lehman College. This is the first increase since 1991. The college president supports the comprehensive fee increase. Calendar item 7BD, Brooklyn College, Student Activity Fee Increase, College of Liberal Arts and Sciences in the Day Session. This resolution provides for an increase of $1.50 to the student activity fees paid by the undergraduate college of liberal arts and sciences students at Brooklyn College for the fall, spring, and summer semesters. I am pleased to note that Brooklyn College achieved a 14% voter turnout in the referendum. The college president supports the increase. Calendar item 7E, York College, Student Activity Fee Increase. This resolution provides for an increase of $27.15 in the student activity fee paid by all students at York College and in the first increase since 1989. The college president supports the increase. Calendar item 7F, Policies and Procedures Concerning Sexual Harassment, Stalking, and Intimate Partner Violence Against Students. City University of New York seeks to create and maintain a safe environment in which all members of the university community, students, faculty, and staff, can learn and work free from fear of sexual assault and other forms of violence. The university's policies on workplace violence and domestic violence and in the workplace apply to all acts of violence that occur in the workplace or that may spill over onto the workplace. The university's sexual harassment policy prohibits many forms of unwelcome conduct, including but not limited to, physical conduct of sexual nature. This policy is specifically directed towards sexual assault, domestic and intimate partner violence, and stalking committed against students on and off campus. I commend both the offices of the General Counsel and Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs for addressing this very serious issue in a very positive way. I will now ask for a vote on calendar items 7A, 7B, 7C, 7D, 7E, and 7F.
May I have a second? Thank you. Are there questions for the Committee? Professor Phillip?
It's understood why we need increases in student activity fees, but it might be good to remember that even in the period when, before the university had tuition, we did have student activity fees of fees of kinds, of various kinds. And a colleague of mine, Professor Stefan Baumert, has calculated that the fees in the 1930s retranslated into today's dollars were of the same order of magnitude as our tuition today. At the same time, fees are not tapable, and it's not good that students have to pay fees that are not subject to tap. And so if the university does achieve a more flexible tuition policy, it would be good if this university acted to move these fees as much as possible into taps, so students would not have to pay them, that they would be covered by tap. At the same time, I'd like to, on a different matter, I'd like to thank Vice Chancellor Schaefer for the extensive discussions we've had on the sexual violence policy. I think the current draft is exceedingly very much better than what we were first given. It's a huge improvement, and I thank you for those discussions.
Thank you for those comments. Any other comments or questions on these matters?
Mr. Chairman, I'm not.
We have a second, and the motion on the table, those items 7A through F. Do you want to make a further comment on them?
Yeah.
All right. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Those matters carry.
The Committee also acted on two student disciplinary appeals in executive session. Mr. Chairman, that now concludes my report.
Thank you very much. I would like to present to the Board the honorary degrees that are recommended as item number eight. You'll find those set out at page 23 of your meeting books. May I have a second to the resolution?
Second.
Any comments, questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, abstentions? Number eight carries. I have an item that I am informing the Board of that does not require the Board's approval. This is a matter taken up by the Executive Committee on March 17, 2010. The Executive Committee unanimously determined that it would be detrimental to the university to delay the advancement of the matter until the next scheduled Board meeting. The action taken is listed as item 9A in your calendar books at page 23, and you can see that it involved an agreement by the university to provide credit support for a proposed facility to be located on 118th Street between Lexington and Third Avenue, immediately beside the campus of the CUNY Hunter College New School of Social Work. And the purpose of this is to offer housing primarily for our graduate students and for faculty of the CUNY Graduate Center. This is a project that has long been sought by the Graduate Center because it will help their recruitment of outstanding faculty and graduate students, and the Executive Committee unanimously approved the resolution, which is set out at page 23 for your information. Under our policy, you authorize the Executive Committee to act, but to always inform the Board of its actions at the next regularly scheduled meeting, which this information item is, follows that procedure. That concludes the first public business for the Board. We will adjourn the meeting to go into executive session, and then we will have a brief, further public meeting at the conclusion of the executive session. Thank you very much.